Yeah, I know. I know. But so we'll see. As soon as you see the sign "On The Air," that's when we start.
Let us know.
Not quite.
Not quite. But...
We're on the air.
Well, good evening, and I'd like to call the meeting of Planning Board of the Tent of Newbury to order. It is Wednesday, March the 4th, and it's 7:01 PM. I'm John Weiss. To my right is...
John O'Connell.
Further to my right...
Martha Taylor.
George Morris.
Richard Moss.
All right. And so we have a time certain public hearing this evening at 7:15 regarding a project at 2332 Sled Road. But before that, we'll start with a discussion of... Yeah, is it 20? What is it?
Yeah, 31.
31. Sean Boyd, are you Sean? And you are...
Bill Seymour.
Bill Seymour. You also from Boyd Associates, or you from Triton?
I'm from Gale Associates.
You're from Gale Associates, okay. With a...
He's not a named partner yet.
With a discussion of the Triton Regional School District renovation of the track and field facility. So with that, if you want to make a presentation, understand that we will... If you go a little bit over, we will cut you short at 7:15, okay? Or, yeah, thereabouts. Is that on? It doesn't microphone. It's just that it's recorded for the audience.
Good evening. I'm Bill Seymour. I'm the Director of Civil Engineering for Gale, and my associate is Sean Boyd. We've been working with Triton Regional School District for about three years now. We started with a needs assessment of their existing facility. We then went into some schematic planning. We now have gone into full design and permitting. And this is our second permitting hearing. We met with the conservation folks a couple of weeks ago, and we're into that process. I'm going to give you just a quick overview of the existing facilities, and then Sean's going to take you very quickly through the major project elements to give you a sense of the project. We've brought with us the submission materials that are required by your regulations and bylaws tonight. We'll leave those with the planning staff, and we will see you again on the 17th...
April 1st.
April 1st for a full public hearing.
If the board votes to set the hearing for that date.
Right. Thank you, obviously. The existing athletic facilities at Triton are some of the worst that we've seen in terms of their serviceability, safety, accessibility, all the various parameters that go into evaluating sports facilities. I should tell you that we at Gale, one of our specialty disciplines is the design of secondary school athletic facilities. We've probably done 50 athletic campus renovations, redevelopments in New England over the last 10 or 15 years. The facilities at Triton, I'll start with the bleachers. That's probably the most egregious problem there. The bleachers have a capacity of somewhere between 1,600 and 1,800 seats. They do not meet current life safety code in terms of the open risers, open treads. They don't meet architectural code as it relates to the width of egress and handrails. They don't meet structural code, today's structural code. They don't meet accessibility code. They're fundamentally unserviceable. They've been condemned and are no longer usable in their present condition. Similarly, the track is a very old track. It has not been used for competition since 2011. A lot of differential settling, a lot of heaving. There's virtually no resilient surfacing on it at this point. The field, in the infield, is heavily constrained for some of the more popular sports now. At the time it was designed, it supported American football in the football width very well, but they now play soccer, men's and women's, and they play lacrosse. And the width dimension of the field inside of the oval of the track is inadequate for those sports. Plus, the types of demands that are placed upon it were never envisioned when the athletic campus was developed, and they cannot sustain a suitable stand of turf over the course of either the spring or the fall season. The lighting is an older lighting technology. The proposed project, as Sean will talk about in a second, will improve the... It will lessen the off-site impacts associated with those lights in terms of glare and bleed. The facility currently lacks public restrooms meeting the state plumbing code for places of public assembly of that type, and we hope to address that as well. Very quickly, that's an overview of their athletic facilities. I could go into more detail about scoring and timing and other amenities, but the fundamental bottom line is they can't run track. They can't have spectator seating at their facility. They can't play many of the sports at a geometry that is appropriate for the intended sport. And what we're hoping to do is basically a full renovation in place, in kind. This project does not represent a change in program. It does not represent a change in the nature of the facilities. The 400-meter track will be a 400-meter track. The field will be a field. The spectator seating will be spectator seating, and the athletic lighting will be athletic lighting, in essentially its same geometry with some significant improvements in the margins. Any questions about the existing facilities or the goals of the project?
There's just one quote. The amenities building is new, however, right? There's not one there.
There are a couple of small amenities buildings that are there, and they do have, I think, one public restroom in this building here. And they do have some storage, and they're using the school facilities for lavatories during competitions. So some of those functions are there in terms of storage and concessions and restrooms. What's being done is to improve those in a new standalone building. That's correct. Other questions? Thank you, Sean.
This is a quick aerial image of the site to give you perspective. I'll leave it below. The black and white, this is an overall context showing some of the properties surrounding the parcel, the main school building, the one-way access coming in, one-way access going out, which is provided in the submission package. But mainly, I'll jump to the black and white version of the existing conditions. Some of the things I want to point out further to Bill's discussion on the existing facilities is some of the various environmental constraints surrounding the parcel or the facility. The green line here is the wetland buffer with the yellow line being the 100-foot buffer.
The green line is the wetland delineation.
The delineation line, the yellow being the buffer, the 100-foot setback. The orange line is the AC/EC zone, which comes very close to the edge of the track, the existing edge of track here. The blue line is the 100-year flood zone, updated to the July 16, 2014 mapping. And the pink line is the 200-foot riverfront setback from the marsh. There's a perennial stream that meanders through the great marsh, and that setback, the 200-foot setback, comes just in front of the existing visitors' bleachers. Any questions on environmental constraints before I jump to proposed? The proposed facility, you can see, as Bill mentioned, we are maintaining a 400-meter running track. However, the radius is expanding to accommodate the lacrosse, soccer, women's lacrosse, men's lacrosse, soccer, and field hockey widths, as well as football will maintain inside the existing track. That does encroach into the existing visitors' bleachers. It doesn't go past the limit of the back of the existing bleachers, however, it does extend into them. The project is not proposing any new visitors' bleachers because of the sensitivity to the environmental areas that are there. They are, however, proposing a new 1,500-person grandstand on the home side with a press box accessible by a hydro lift. We will be filing a waiver with the Architectural Access Board. The code requires an elevator for this type of use, but because of the limit of use on how often it gets used, past experience, they will grant a waiver for a hydro lift. The 2,400-square-foot amenities building will be located approximately in this location. It is off of the existing access paths that enter into the facility. It will kind of be the gateway into the facility. It is proposed as two separate standalone buildings with a combined roof and an entrance way, about a 14-foot width, I believe, entrance way into the facility, where they'll have tickets, a ticket storage, a one-team room, about 49 people, concessions, and a men's and women's restroom. I will note that the men's and women's restroom is sized for a 50% waiver reduction. The state plumbing code requires, in our opinion, and based on, again, past experience and similar projects of size and scope, an excessive amount of fixtures, and we will be applying to the state plumbing board for a 50% waiver, which is historically granted for this type of facility. There will be eight lanes on the straightaway to accommodate the straightaway events, the hurdles, 110-meter hurdles, six lanes on the oval with the appropriate setbacks to any vertical obstruction, fence, and whatnot. A full paved and surface D areas, which is the main increase in impervious area, impervious lock coverage, as well as a synthetic turf field inside the oval.
Before you describe that, what did you just say about...
The D areas?
No, no. Yeah, what is that?
So it's the area between the goalpost, the end line...
Right.
And the first lane line of the track.
Right.
It's kind of got that D shape to it.
Oh, D shape, okay. And that will be a now pervious...
Paved and surfaced.
Paved and surfaced.
Yeah, it'll match the track surfacing, because this, the high jump event is located in this area. The long jump, triple jump events are located in this area, and surrounding those will be the same material as the track surfacing.
And what is the surface of the track?
It's at the track pavement is asphalt, as it is today, and there will be a latex, rubber-chrom latex, half-inch surface that was there originally, but is now gone, if that makes sense.
Mm-hmm.
There will be improvements to some of the other various field events shot put, which is proposed here, the pole vault, the venue, which is proposed here. And you can see in the highlights are the same as the existing conditions, how the various environmental constraints lay out onto the proposed conditions. You can see the 100-foot buffer runs just parallel with the sideline here. The AC/EC zone clips the corner of this edge. There's about 493 square feet of the proposed improvements that will be within this AC/EC zone in this corner. The 200-foot riverfront buffer travels through the straightaway on the back stretch. The 100-foot floodplain just comes close to the project, does not encroach into the project, and you can see we are outside the wetland delineation line. That's kind of a quick presentation on...
Talk about lights.
Do you have any questions?
I don't at this stage.
At this stage?
I mean, we're going to get the documents now.
We will get the documents and we'll...
Many questions after that.
Do you want any brief overview of the drainage?
Yeah, it wouldn't hurt. Sure, go ahead. We edit with the COMCOM.
About three minutes.
Do it again.
Two minutes.
We've got about two or three minutes to do this, but, yeah.
Yeah, don't make a big deal of it, Sean.
Yeah. Quickly. To existing, there are two culverts that discharge into the AC/EC that handle runoff from the roof tennis courts and the front parking lot. We are maintaining...
And the field.
And the field, the track and field area. We are maintaining those runs. This is a 30-inch RCP line. There is an offline water quality unit here that all of the water goes through before it gets to this outlet. And then the roof runoff and the area of the tennis court drains into various catch basins and discharges through this culvert here in pink at the top of the page. We are matching the existing drainage patterns pretty much identically. The track and field all drain to outlet control structures, which allow water to hold back into the base stone of the synthetic turf field before discharging back into the culverts. And that is the way it is handled today. There are various catch basins in the sidelines, which collect all the water from the field and from the track. It flows into this existing line and then discharges into the, at those existing culverts.
The bottom line of the drainage system is that we're taking two discharge points today, and we are capturing storm water, treating it to the extent that it needs to be, and releasing it at those same two points out or below the existing condition.
Right. And the preposed, as far as impervious surface, where does that stand?
The impervious area is increased mainly...
Decreased.
No, increased.
Increased, I would think so, yeah.
Mainly because of the paved and surface Ds. Each of these is about 10,000 square feet.
Yeah. Percentage-wise, roughly, 10%, 20%, 100%?
It's roughly 30,000 square feet over a six-acre area.
Right.
Is how much it's increasing.
Okay, as a percentage, you don't know that. Okay, never mind. I'll get it off the drawings, yeah.
One of the things to keep in mind is that the infield of the track is now significantly bigger because of the change in the radius and far more permissive. The soils there today are very heavy marine clays that get compacted because of the play. Most of the runoff off of that field is superficial, off of the surface, and it carries a pretty heavy sediment burden when the root zone gets broken down. The synthetic turf field will drain vertically. It won't drain to the sideline. It will drain vertically. It will recharge to a much greater extent than what is being experienced there today. So although there may be some small increase in impervious area, the net effect of the project will be to increase recharge over that footprint.
Yeah, how are you improving the soil? It's D soil now, right?
Yeah, it's all going away. The way the synthetic turf field is built is all of the top soil, all of the organic layer will be taken away.
Right.
And then you're going to build a basin with very open-grated, free-draining stone.
Okay.
Double washed, less than...
How deep?
Less than 3% fines, 18 inches.
No, about 12 inches.
12 inches, yeah.
Yeah.
And, I'm sorry.
I was just going to say, we've classified the soils today as a C, and assuming a .17 inches per hour...
You said a B?
No, a C.
A C, okay.
Yeah. Assuming a .17 inches per hour for our recharge calculations.
Sure.
It's going to greatly, because we've included the outlet control structures to hold water back into that stone base, we're going to try to promote recharges to the maximum extent possible with the type of soils.
Okay, I think we need to just cut for a second, and...
They'll be back. We can talk about...
You guys will be back. If you wanted to hang around, we do have this other item we need to hear right now. If you want it, we'd be happy to chat with you later.
I think we did what we needed to do.
You did. That's fine. Submit it. That's good enough.
And basically, the thought we'd like to leave you and the public with is that it's basically a renovation in place and kind. We're really not doing anything there in the proposed condition that's not there today.
And so I saw rather extensive notes that Martha sent to you, and I'm just curious, have you responded to most of her concerns?
I did. I think I addressed a majority of them. I think there are a couple outstanding that, as far as dumpster areas and stuff that we can talk about.
Right, there's nothing major, but almost everything was addressed appropriately.
All right. So we need to decide that we need to accept for review the submission by Triton Regional School District.
Right, and then vote, set up a public hearing.
And then set up a public hearing.
Have you looked at their submission? Have they given us everything we need to?
Yeah, I sent Sean a lot of notes, and he picked them all up with a few exceptions.
Yeah, okay, so he's got a complete submission.
Yeah, I mean, there are just a few things which are not...
So all we need to do is set a hearing date, I guess, huh?
What is the hearing date?
Well, we have to set it, but we have to first accept the plans that have been submitted tonight, so we needed a...
A motion to approve or to accept the site plan review application.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And then we need to set a date. You would suggest, and maybe you've had discussions about the first, which would be our first meeting in April.
Right.
As the first, on April?
As the public hearing.
Right, because of the advertising timeframe, we can't do it soon enough.
We can't. So it's the 15th.
Okay, 15, yeah.
So it'd be April 1st, which will be after the next COMCOM session, which I believe will.
Right.
So we'll have the benefit of that input.
Okay, so April 1st is the date. Oh, it's okay, all right.
Kind of a motion to, about the date that we need to set this meeting on?
So moved.
And time.
April 1st, second?
Second.
Any discussion of this?
No.
Do you want to set a time as well?
Yeah, a time?
7:15.
7:15 on April the 1st, which is roughly 28 days from now, right?
And I'm sorry, who made and settled the motions?
Well done.
We all did.
First and second. And all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
This being a public job, where do we go with the review? And who pays for that?
Well, we're treating it as if it were any regular client.
Yeah, we kind of have to, don't we?
I think so.
I think we can't cut them enormous amounts of slack because it's a public job.
So that is the other question I had, whether the board would like to have peer engineering review on the project.
I don't know whether, where I stand on that until I've looked at the drawings in detail, which I have not.
Right.
My suspicion is that there's a good bet we don't need one, but I don't know that at this point.
Well, the major issue here is the extent to which really, you really are doing what, just replacing what was there. And I think, you know, something for me that would be helpful would be an overlay of the existing conditions and the proposed.
That's, I believe...
Is that it?
Well, and each sheet, you can see the existing conditions.
Yeah, okay.
You can, yeah.
All right, that's fine. That's fine.
It's a shade of gray that's a little bit...
Okay, okay.
I guess my only question, then, would be whether, you know, whether you feel that there's enough drainage, you know, new drainage issues that it would be good to...
We may. The thing is, we don't know yet, and we need to get into the, look at the drawings and look at the verbal description. So let's just hold that for a second. Is that okay?
Yeah, that's how I feel. I don't know whether I want one or not until I look at it in detail.
My only caution on that is if we delay, we might not be able to get and decide that we want it. We might not be able to get comments back until the first session.
Well, let's say that we shouldn't delay until our next meeting, but we should, maybe the, John can come in and take a look at these. I'll come in and take a look, and by next week, that would then give us three weeks. If we decide next week that we need it, then give us a little more time than if we have our next meeting. So why don't we just decide that that's what we're going to do?
Okay, and...
I've got the fees. Fees, do I submit today as well?
Yes, submit those today, and what I would suggest is I'll take the deposit for the engineering review, and obviously it'll be returned to you if we don't use it, if that sounds reasonable.
Right. Yeah, that's fine. Okay. Anything else?
And I'll put together the legal ad and get that to you, you know, with the dates and stuff.
All right, I've got the 300-foot offenders list that we sent out.
Okay, excellent.
As well as the 16 and 16 copies and five of the stormwater report.
Okay, super. Thank you.
What would you like us to do with these materials?
You can just leave them right there, and I'll take care of them after the meeting. Thank you.
I'm assuming nobody has any objections if I, with questions, call these guys...
No.
Outside of the meeting?
Nope. We encourage it. Thank you both very much.
My pleasure. Thank you.
Appreciate your time.
It's not freezing out.
No, it's not.
That's it.
So now we will continue the public hearing, which we last heard two weeks ago for 23 and 31 Sled Road, Stoway Storage, Newbury LLC. Bill, how are you?
Good evening.
Good evening. So we have a decision that has been written, and...
Then I have hard copies here if anybody needs them.
Well, I think I have all of the changes, the most recent being the document...
The most recent, right.
Ginny's was the most recent change, primarily as it related to duration of approval. And do you have that language? I didn't bring it with me.
Yes, well, let me just hand out the copies. So the last one actually incorporated extension for phase two into, you know, for good cause.
Okay, so this is everything in it?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, I don't have those from... I think I got all three.
So did people have, George had some comments. I'm not sure of the extent to which you were able to incorporate those into...
I did not incorporate them since the board hadn't reviewed them, so...
No, I didn't. I just got them late.
So I've got copies here of those as well that I'll hand out.
Who's are these?
Those are from George, and it's double-sided, and it starts about...
Here you go.
Almost two-thirds of the way down the page.
Sled Road decision. All right, want to deal with this first? Let's deal with George's first and see to what extent we would want to incorporate or make changes accordingly. In paragraph beginning of the proposed project, what page is that on, George? In Sled Road decision.
Yeah, which one is it here? Let's see. Whoops. It's at the top of page two, and it is paragraph seven. It talks about a storage of a limited number of U-Haul trucks, and the question was, what does limited mean? Do we want to define limited?
Yeah, and I think that was something that Bill was going to kind of work out.
I sent you an email about it. You're generally going to have three to six trucks on site. It's not my intent to have them out front in front of the nice building I'm going to build. So the intent was to leave one out front and put the other ones behind the first building, because there's only two man doors behind the first building, and they'll be out of sight.
Okay. So the U-Haul, one will be visible, but the others will be out of sight, or all will be out of sight?
No, one will be visible.
Okay.
And generally, it's cyclical when students are going to...
No, U-Haul, U-Haul trucks.
Hold on for a second. U-Haul trucks.
Yeah, okay, thank you. I left one hearing aid in the office. Sorry.
It's cyclical. When students are going to college, you're going to have more trucks coming to your property and leaving your property, and, you know, less around the holidays. So the intent is just to leave one out front so people know that you could possibly rent a U-Haul there.
So the question is, what is limited? And does anybody, do we want to further define that, or is that...
We want to have not a reasonable, well, not to exceed a certain number except for certain circumstances, which the board has notified of ahead of time, like going back to college times, or...
Or would you perhaps want to set it as one of the conditions, that there would be no more than one visible from the street at any time, something like that?
Yeah, I think that's okay.
Yeah, that's not unreasonable.
I don't think we care.
Yeah.
How many are in the back and not visible?
I don't care. I have a dozen out there for all I care.
The only thing I'd ask is that the board understand that if you'll have one visible, if someone's returning one...
Got it.
They're going to leave it in front until it's moved around.
I think that's fine. I think that we, George, would be, is that okay?
Yeah, I agree. We ought to change the wording on this, sort of take out limited and just put one may be on display at all times.
Okay.
What would be the maximum number of trucks you would expect on site, reasonable, the reasonable maximum?
Well, my consultant who does this in South Boston, you know, at the most he's had on site has been 10 or 12. And so, and the building is 145 feet long. So I'm sure you can put them behind the building and hide them pretty well.
Could you say a maximum of 12? Would you feel comfortable with that?
More.
Except for extraordinary circumstances?
Not more than...
Only one of which may be... How about a maximum of 12, 12 vehicles?
How about a maximum of twelve, twelve vehicles, you could feel comfortable with that?
I do.
Okay.
I don't have a problem with, with vehicles there, that's the business you're in for heaven's sakes.
And not more than one of which is visible from the street?
One visible from the street.
Okay, so we'll just change that.
And so you want that in that first, in that first paragraph?
Yeah, we could do that.
Okay.
All right, then, in next paragraph about phasing, I would add a reference, well, we've just, I think we have a major thing about phasing, that we're about to get a comment from Ginny, so is this?
Well, this is related phasing, that Ginny's going to be talking about is at the end of the document.
Okay, so.
Tied duration, and I think you at least ought to make a reference in phasing down to duration of approval.
Okay, so.
To tie the two together.
I'm not sure if I followed.
Second paragraph down on page two.
I got it.
The applicant intends to phase the project.
Right.
And that goes on to talk about it.
Right.
But then we talk about the duration and the phasing related to duration, and that's tied to that paragraph two on page two. So I, I would like to just make a reference in paragraph two to see duration of approval at the end of the document on page, page six.
Oh, you're just saying, reference it?
Reference it.
Fine.
Yep.
I didn't understand that, George. Refer to.
Yeah, for, for more information, see.
More information, see duration of approval, right, okay, Martha, okay. Okay, those two, paragraph beginning site plan approval is based on, site plan approval is based on, a change farm to drive?
Yeah, it's part of the, where was that, Martha?
Paragraph beginning site plan approval.
Bottom of page two, it says applicant in honor of record, it says elevens Fartherland Farm, that should be eleven Fartherland Drive.
Oh.
Got it.
Is that your correct address?
It's both actually, for some reason, sometimes they get things addressed to follow the farm, other times they get things addressed to follow the drive.
On your plan, it says drive.
Then we should use drive.
Okay. All right.
I know where you are.
Yeah, I think the application may have said.
Oh, really?
Okay.
Farm.
The proposed, all right, in final decision, is this now on which page, in final decision?
Yeah, I've got an issue.
Right here.
That's page four of eight.
But what's that?
I've got an issue with the type of fill, it's fine that we have an LSP to say grace on it, but we've given no criteria. And normally, for any construction job where you're importing fill, the language is clean, naturally occurring, free of deleterious material. It took me several years in the industry to learn what deleterious meant, but it means, okay. I think we should say something, not just that we'll have an LSP look at it, but that it must be, it must have a passing score. I don't think we want to get into specifications of all the potential problems that could be in it, just let's get a clean bill of health from an LSP. That it be clean, naturally occurring, without deleterious material, that would, that would make me happy. And that covers.
That covers my question.
Anything that is obviously deleterious will show up in the LSP's report and we can talk, you know. That make sense to everybody from the planning board?
Do they check for, I'm just curious, do they check for radioactivity?
Pardon me?
Do they check for radioactivity?
Normally not.
I'm just curious.
I wouldn't sweat that big time, it's not like this is a, you know, a nursery school or, or, a nursing home. I've never heard of that being a, a criterion. It could be a problem potentially, but this is sand, this is not ledge. You tend to have radioactivity in, in your, in your igneous rocks, ledge, your underlying basement material. Uh, not, and this is going to be sand, you're not hauling rock in here. Would you sweat that? I wouldn't sweat that.
Probably not.
Yeah, I wouldn't.
Okay, John, what you're saying is that you have a determination of how to make a good judgment on what is appropriate fill?
Right, and I'm throwing out the language that usually you hear in a, in a not-too-complicated construction, site filling, excavation kind of specification.
What, what might be appropriate for me is not appropriate for you, so I think we really have to define that, okay.
So.
That's what I'm throwing out, and I'm willing to discuss it certainly, Adam.
Do you want to repeat that again, John?
Clean, naturally occurring, granular material, free of any deleterious material. And I, that's not my word, it's the word that you usually hear C in specs. But I mean, it's an accepted meaning, I, you know, if, if you have a high contaminant contact, that is sure as heck deleterious. If you have a little one, eh, probably not. I mean, we, I wouldn't hold these people to the same standard as we would if this were going to be a playground or a housing development, or, 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 or.
Well, I'm, I'm, I'm assuming this definition doesn't get us into a overly zealous interpretation of that, if you know what I mean.
Oh, I do know what you mean, that's why I'm saying, just keep it, clean is not negotiable, we, we don't want it, we don't want stuff that is full of roots, bricks, roofing tiles and so forth.
No, of course you don't.
And, okay.
And naturally occurring, if you say that, then that means it's come out of a bank somewhere. It doesn't mean that you've taken up a parking garage and crushed it. And we have a lot of that going around too. And that's not, structurally it's not bad, but you have no idea what's in that because of drippings for fifty years of cars. And free of deleterious material just means that it's exactly what it says, there's no bad stuff in it. I don't know how you get simpler than that.
I think it's very simple, any comments, Richard, do you have any thoughts on that?
No, I think that sounds very reasonable.
You're okay with that?
George?
Yes.
You're okay with it?
Yes.
Good.
So my question is, do you want to put that here under the findings, or do you want to put that as a condition, condition?
I think you should go in as a condition.
I would put it as a condition.
Okay.
Okay, so that would go under, um, no, we've got, George pointed out, there was a, yeah, that needs to be renumbered, there was a funky thing that happened.
Yeah.
A, B, C, somewhere in there.
What, what I would expect would be a report from the LSP, here's what I found.
C, D, okay.
And he's going to do the standard LSP kind of tests, and anything real bad will pop out of that presumably, and at that point, now we talk.
Yep.
So it, it would go in, I think, on page six of eight, what is A in the middle of the page, which shouldn't be A.
That's what I.
Yeah, right in there, okay. So. All right, now do you have any others here, George? There's A to D, A to D.
But there's other stuff on the draw, on the.
In A after D, should we add after professional, the cost for which shall be borne by the applicant?
It should be the cost for which it will be borne by the applicant, if that makes sense.
Yeah, it, it's the same one we just referred to, now it says the planning board should require that the source and quality of fill imported to the site be verified by a licensed site professional.
Okay.
And the cost for which will be borne by the applicant.
Good. So we'll add that to that, the cost of which.
Shall be borne by the applicant.
Shall be borne by the applicant, Martha, do you have that?
Got that, yep.
And then, um, D after second A, that's the same one. Change storage building to climate-controlled storage building.
Yeah, that's a specific reference to that building in the plans.
D after. The applicant shall provide an emergency access door in the northwest corner of building A.
The office slash, and it should say, climate-controlled storage building rather than just storage building.
Okay.
Is that right, Bill?
That is correct.
Yep.
Okay. Uh, okay, and then F?
In F, recording, second line, add by the applicant of a certification. We're not obliged to record it, he is.
Now which F is this?
This is.
It's the second F.
The second F.
This one, at the discussion of the building commissioner?
Yes, right after this recording, right here.
Okay. Add by the applicant, okay. Did you get that, Martha?
Yep.
Okay, I think we have all of George's comments, are you okay, do you have anything else, George?
Yeah, I'd left duration open, I hadn't sorted it out. Bill, in your analysis of how you're going with the project, you're going to build one, two, and three, or A, B, and C, and at some point you'll say, I want to go on and finish the project in the phase two. That may not happen for three or four years, right? Maybe less.
From, from my understanding, their lease-up will take place over a period of eighteen months.
Okay.
And there, there'll be a bit of an algorithm that I'll be able to determine how quickly that it will be leased up. At that point in time, I think it's going to be, within three years, that we're going to be doing phase two. One thing that I wanted to point out though, phase two may only be two buildings, it's not building out the rest of the project. It's depending on, if, if I'm leasing a lot of climate-controlled units, then phase two, I'm going to want to focus a little bit more on climate-controlled rather than just traditional units. So, um, the answer is that probably within the first three years will be, if we're successful, starting phase two, but I'm just not sure how many buildings we're going to build in phase two.
Okay, so it's unlikely that phase two would be begun within the two years allowed under this decision, right? Phase one will be done, hopefully.
Yeah, phase one will be done, if we're leasing, if I'm at sixty, seventy percent occupancy, then I will be starting the next phase.
When, at, at the end of two years or within the two-year period?
Within the two-year period.
Within the two. But it will not be completed until well after the two?
Probably.
See, that's an issue of whether to include wording about extensions in here for completion of phase two, or actually saying if phase two has not begun by the end of the first phase. Then you have to come in and reapply.
Yeah, this is a bit of a.
Penodrum.
Yeah, it's, it's a quagmire, because generally you build one building and you build it.
I understand, yeah.
I'm determining.
I think Ginny, I think this covers.
I think this language covers it, did you read this?
Uh, yeah, I read it, it's, the only thing that I was questioning is, uh, okay, the part that I didn't want to see is, has been already struck and out on this, so that's fine.
And then there's one, yeah.
That's good.
The final sentence is that if it's, if there's any modification, you might have to.
Right.
Reapply, but I think, I think it covers the scenario that Bill's describing.
Good.
Yeah, which we're trying to make sure we don't put you in a pretzel.
We're trying to make it comfortable for you, sir.
I appreciate that very much.
At the same time realizing that the market could be the market, and, and one of the things we have to prepare for, as, as do you, is that the market could change, in, in a downward way, we hope it's upward, but, you know, you never know. So have you read this, this language, John, this, this new?
I'm sorry, where, where are we, the last one?
No, we're on.
Where are we?
We're on six of, six of eight of this, and this was the language that is addressing this whole issue of duration, one moreover.
I did read that, and I don't remember having a problem with it, let me read it again.
Start.
See if I can get a problem. Yeah, I mean, basically, it's a common sense thing, you know, don't drag your feet, if you have to drag your feet, and you are, you've already leveled with us and told us that you get halfway through, you may take a hiatus and wait to see, or not do it at all, that's also a possibility, I assume. And we're saying, okay, if, if this happens, we'll talk again. Is that, am I reading that correctly, George?
Yeah, that's exactly right, and that's what it should say.
I don't have a problem with that, that's kind of what we've been saying, right?
Yeah.
Just, John, one thing that, I'm just asking you this as much as possible, you're talking about phase one and phase two, but you said phase two may only include a few buildings, at least initially. There may well be a phase three, how do we feel about that?
Well, I think a, a lot depends on whether you are, at any point in time, do you substantially change the plan? I'm just saying, you don't, you don't know that, but if you did, then you would have to resubmit.
Okay.
A whole, a whole new application, but, and on the idea that you go a phase one, two, and three, and you're still adhering to the plan that, that we have approved, I think we could do that. As long as you keep on asking for extensions of time.
Yeah, I think it's just a question of stay in communication so we know what we, what you're up to.
Right.
And have an, a opportunity to object if there's something that.
Right.
Really gets up our nose.
So is that fair?
Yeah, it sounds very reasonable.
I think that's fair.
I don't see any problem with that.
No, I don't either.
And, and just to let you know, I did, Elizabeth reviewed the language and she was fine with it, on duration as well.
Oh, Elizabeth?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, is there anything more to be said about the approval document of?
Any discussion of performance guarantee?
Oh, let's talk about, I'm sorry, thank you. So our zoning code allows us to require for the public interest for non-construct, non-building issues, a performance bond or surety. And we've, and so we haven't had a discussion about that.
We have not.
So what does anybody think about it?
I'm on both sides of the issue, there's another project in town who would be really, really, really nice if we had one, which we don't. By the same token, you definitely have to have one for a job that is going to end up being, belonging to the town. This is not, this is going to belong to either Bill or somebody to whom he sells it, or whatever, it's not going to be, well, I guess it might be us if we take it from somebody for back taxes, but chances are, it's a private project. So that argues in favor of, of it's his business, leave him alone. The flip side is that not you, Bill, but a developer in general, could get, could be very poorly financed, could get halfway into it, make a god-awful mess, have it a work in progress, and then go belly up and, and skip town. And it's not like that's never happened before, there's, there's eyesores all over the, all over New England of, somebody's dream didn't work out too well and the job stopped, and what are you going to do with what's left? I don't know what I think there for this one. This is buffered to a degree, it, it's not going to be as open as the, as some other projects are.
George, do you have any thoughts?
Yeah, taking personalities out of it, nothing encourages performance more than a performance bond.
Yeah.
That's true.
Yeah.
And the question is, if we're going to have one, how much should it be to encourage performance? Doesn't have to be the whole package, it just has to be something that makes it painful to not perform.
Richard, do you have any thoughts on this?
This is already a phased project, I mean, I think he's shown a lot of, frankly, a lot more diligence in planning this thing that, than most people would, a lot of, some people would just go ahead and do the whole thing, and that would be the end of it. He's specifically going for phase one, maybe phase two, maybe even phase three, and will be looking at the results of what he's doing. And I would say that that would tend to, I don't disagree with what you're saying.
Yeah, no, and I don't totally disagree with George's thing.
Yeah, I mean, I think that if we're not going to get, ask for a performance bond, this is the kind of situation that I think would be a good one not to ask for, that's not to say we shouldn't.
Personalities out of it.
One of the things that, the, the, the only concern I've had in thinking this through is not the developer in question at all, is exactly as you say, is the marketplace. But I think that we, as a town, are, have a lot of our own surety here, because it is phased. And so, but I think that the only potential, so let's talk this through, you're going to clear A through E in the first phase?
Correct.
So the potential issue for the town might be, because I'm going to assume that you're going to build A, B, and C.
Correct.
So the first three buildings, so, so we're left, or the, he's, you're left, and then we potentially are left with a cleared site, but it's, how far in, how far in is C, D, and E from the street? And can we see it? And is it?
You got it there? It is at about a hundred and four feet elevation, the street's about a hundred and eleven, so if, even if I was bringing it filled, it would just.
And how far is it from the street?
I'm not sure of that.
A, B, C, D, and E, and this is a, let's see, two forty, five hundred. So we're something in the vicinity of three fifty, four hundred feet in?
And, and, and he's built. And, and, and he's built all this to here, and, and this, and he's cleared only this?
He's clearing further so we can stockpile.
But it's a, but it's a smaller amount of land than I expected it to be. So I'm not sure what our exposure might be in that. I thought that might be a problem.
I would, I would be concerned not that he, the buildings get completed, but I would be more concerned in what would it take to restore it to something that looks reasonably presentable. Now, if you've got buildings under construction, there's a real strong incentive to finish the dog on things. Where the incentive isn't there is when you get it cleared and scrubbed and filled in place. Now we've created a desert. I would be looking, I think, at getting rid of the brush if it's still lying around, looming and seeding the area that has been turned into a desert. Now we get it back to something that'll grow things.
So it's just cleaning it up? Cleaning it up?
Cleaning it up, yeah, not trying to complete it. And cleaning it up, I think, is a lot cheaper than, than trying to finish the job.
And as the property owner, it's in his interest to do that.
I would think. I mean, we're talking, we're not talking the cost. We're talking roughly three percent. A bond, if you've got any credit at all, is in the three percent range.
Well, you know, candidly, I hate being tarred with the same brush of...
Sorry?
So candidly, I hate being tarred with the same brush of some other people in town that are...
Well, I don't think you are, but I think you're suffering with the fact that we've, we've had a bad experience. We're not putting you in that position at all, period. But we are sensitive. It's like the guy that got hit by a train is afraid to go into a toy store.
You certainly wouldn't want me to turn the property back into what it is right now.
No.
Because I think you guys know the condition.
Well, right now, it's a junkyard.
With trees.
But no tires.
Yeah.
You know, it's not in my better interest to have it look poorly. I, I want that area to look nice.
Sure.
It's in my best interest to make it look nice.
Yeah.
I'm gonna have three nice-looking buildings that I've invested a lot of money in.
Yep.
And, you know, I, you know, obviously, I would prefer not that bond. I'm not gonna have financing on the project at all.
You don't have what?
Or not. There's no financing on the project.
Yeah.
So we are going to go in and, you know, build this, and I think we're building something, you know, as nice as we can.
Sure.
However, you know, I'll do what the board sees fit.
John, could you put a dollar figure on...
I'm sorry?
Could you put a dollar figure on what you feel would be necessary to do the restoration?
Well, I could, but I'm not about to pull it out of my, out of the air right now. I, I, that would be irresponsible.
Okay, so you don't have a figure at this point?
Yeah.
So, what is the, I, I guess, the more I think this through, from my point of view, and then we can decide if we wanna put something forward, I think that it's much more in the property owner's interest than ours, the more I think it through, even, even, even fixing the, the rear, but, so I'm not sure if I'm so inclined.
I don't, I don't understand.
I'm not sure what's in it for him, other than another check to write.
No, no, much more in it for him to improve the property on his own.
Oh, yeah, certainly. It's, it's interest to him. I get, I see what you're, I'm sorry, I misunderstood.
Without...
Yeah.
Without a punitive thing from our, our point. I, I, just to be surprised.
I'm not preaching that we should get a bond.
Yeah, I, I, I'm not...
Picking it through.
So I'm, I'm not sure that we want one, but I'm not sure that we don't. But, so, if anyone wants to put one forward, we, we can have a discussion about that.
I am not gonna put one forward. Bill, when your engineer was here with you, we had discussed, at least the engineer and I did, about revegetating that area where these, Phil will be stockpiled, which is, you're talking about is D and E up in that area. And everybody agreed at that time, yeah, you'd clean it up and revegetate it. And I think that will happen.
Why can't we just have it as a condition? That in the event that D and E and the other buildings are not built, that any cleared land will be revegetated?
Okay.
Any cleared land will be revegetated.
Revegetated. Just have it as a condition, and then that...
I agree.
That satisfies what our concern would be.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're putting some trust in you, but that's okay.
Well, you're running at your own risk.
In Bill, we trust.
Yes.
No, I, I'm happy with that. Is that okay with everybody?
Yes, yes.
Yeah.
Okay. So Martha?
Yes?
Have you gotten all of these things that we have talked about? And that, can we, can we vote on this document pending the changes that we have addressed?
Yeah, I think you could vote on it as amended.
And as amended from George's comments, John's comments, and the most recent one about the surety or the, you know, the guarantee?
I have...
So do...
Oops, I'm sorry.
No, that's, what is that?
I, I just had a question about D, the construction inspections. It, it seems a bit open-ended. How many, how often?
I would think the big inspection you'd be looking at would be, the way I personally envision it, that the board may not feel this way. What I'm seeing is it's, it's largely the Conservation Commission who have the responsibility to see that the BMP that you construct is constructed properly so that it actually works. That is a concern, and so many of these nationwide, they look pretty, they, they get, you know, money is spent on them, they don't work. That would be the biggie. The rest of it is, except for your obligations to SAM, where you must bill per the Mass Building Code and Plumbing Code and all those codes. How the rest of that works, I think, is really your business more than ours. If this were a subdivision, we'd be all over it. We'd be watching all the time because we had to, we're, we're gonna end up holding the baby. But it's still your problem.
I concur with John's. I don't see us into a construction review of your structures. You know, it's, it's really the environmental issues and the constructed wetlands and the like.
Well, thank you. I just need to...
And I don't, I don't think there's anybody besides me that's gonna be particularly interested in, in seeing what's going on there. And I can go on site anyway because I'm on the Conservation Commission, and you can't keep me off. You can keep these guys off, but you can't keep me off 'cause I'm a ConCon member.
Well, the Building Commissioner will have an interest, too. He'll see you frequently.
Right, and so we, we kind of trust him.
Do, do you feel the language needs to be changed?
No, it just, it, it seemed a little open-ended. I didn't know exactly what we were thinking. We're looking for.
Yeah.
But you've just clarified it.
Yeah, okay.
Well, most of us have several things going at the same time, and we're probably not looking for more work.
You ready for motion?
I am.
Okay. I move to approve the site plan review application for twenty-three and thirty-one Sled Road, applicant Stowaway Storage Newbury LLC, subject to the decision, the board's final written decision in the matter.
And, excuse me, do we need anything further from, in that motion, or just as amended? Do we need that?
I think it might be helpful to say that...
As amended.
As amended.
Okay. And it's been seconded by John. Any discussion at all on this issue?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Done.
Thank you.
You're more than welcome.
Congratulations.
Very excited, and, you know, in August, when the snow clears, we'll...
We'll take a sidewalk.
You got another visit from the ConCon when the snow clears, and I guess you must, too, but...
Yeah.
Whenever that happens. That could be mid-June, early July.
We'll be ready. Hopefully, the site will be cleaned up.
That's gonna be one wet job site for some period of time.
Well, there's a lot of ledge, so...
What?
There's a lot of ledge, so the ledge isn't...
Yeah.
Keeps it dry.
Okay, what do we need to do on that?
So what I'll do is I'll incorporate the amendments that were discussed. Good night, Bill.
Night.
And then send it around to make sure that I've got everything.
And when, do we, do we need to, I can come and sign it. Do I, should we all sign it?
I think it'd be good if everybody signed it. Elizabeth won't be able to, so I can just...
Can we sign it now? In anticipation of, can we just... I mean, I've got... We have to sign it in quadruplet?
Um, I usually do tripllet.
Well, I have one signature page.
And I can also...
Do I? No, wait a minute.
There's one. I don't care. I'm in here every couple of days anyway, so I can sign it.
What I can do is print out three clean copies before you all leave of the signature page.
Okay, why don't you do that, and we'll sign it? Okay. Then, does anyone wanna go back up to...
Do you wanna motion for the end of the public hearing?
Oh. Thank you very much.
It was George.
Thank you very much.
I second the motion.
All right, that we, we will close the public hearing on thirty-two, twenty, thirty?
Twenty-three, thirty-one.
Twenty-three, thirty-one Sled Road, and that's it.
We kinda skipped the meeting minutes. Does that matter?
We don't have any.
We don't have any.
Do you wanna vote on that?
On which?
The motion to close the public hearing.
All those.
All those, and we had a second, second, I thought we voted on it.
We had a second, all in favor?
All in favor.
All favored.
Excellent. Okay. Anybody wanna go back up and have any further discussion on the Triton track issue? Or are we okay with just moving forward with that when we get the information? Okay?
Well, there's, as far as the review goes, there's, there's the two sides to that story. One is that it's a public agency, a sister public agency, and typically fees get waived when it's a public operation. The flip side is we make everybody else go through, pay for a review. And is it fair to not have, this is way bigger than many of, that we do require reviews on, way bigger than seventy-six Turnpike, for example, and we're not, if we don't require it. I, you know, I'm not speaking from a technical standpoint. I'm just talking from a policy standpoint.
This is immediately adjacent...
If that matters to anybody.
This is immediately adjacent to an, this is immediately adjacent to an AC/EC land area. And if there's any problems with this, and there wasn't an engineering analysis of it, I, I think we could be criticized for not doing that.
Yeah, I don't know how I feel about that until I look at it deeply.
Okay, yeah, well, for sure.
I think what you said is absolutely correct. If a problem comes up and we hadn't done due diligence, we would be justly criticized.
Yep.
Did the AC/EC exist when Triton Track was built in the first place?
No, no, Christ, no. No, we were back in the Hatch Act days. Chapter one thirty-one didn't exist yet.
Right.
That was, what, early seventies?
Something like that.
Late sixties, early seventies, when it was actually built. Doggone thing almost got built down behind my house. They chose to put it out there instead.
The whole high school?
The whole high school. The whole thing was gonna be down in the little farm. But that was, that was kicked around.
Interesting.
Well, the good news was sewage was gonna be a real problem for them.
Yeah. And, well, they have water there, though, don't they?
It's not, it's not a not problem now. It is...
Yeah. Well, okay. Yeah, I go in and out. I'm trying to really understand the extent to which things are going to be changed. And that's, it, it's like when we had the guy come in and, for the Pritchard property. I mean, they really didn't make many changes and so on, but I think there's a lot of construction that's gonna go on here, so... And the other thing I must admit I didn't understand is that he was saying he only adding thirty thousand square feet, but isn't the entire football field gonna be, go from a pervious field to a impervious field?
Actually, kind of the opposite.
Yeah, opposite, yeah.
I think that's what he was trying to tell us.
How does, how does that happen?
I don't understand how that works.
How does that, how does that work?
I, I can't answer that question.
And the way they described it in their, in their application is that right now, the, you know, the, the natural field is so, is so compacted and so degraded that everything just sheet flows right off of it. And that synthetic turf field is, is pervious. It's perforated, so the drainage goes through.
Up to a point, but you've got clay that's this deep. And now you're gonna replace the top quarter.
Twelve inches, yeah.
Right.
Yeah. It's fine for the first twelve inches, but what happens after that?
It goes, it's gonna go sideways, not down.
Right.
But he was implying it's gonna go down, which is the part I didn't get.
I don't know how it does that.
I don't either. It would certainly tend to go sideways, and what it would do is weep out of the side of the hill.
Think it would do the exact same thing it's doing right now.
Yeah, if, if, it would only weep sideways if channels were constructed to allow it to. If you just dig a hole and fill it with crushed stone, all you have is a bathtub full of crushed stone.
I mean, the way they've, the way they've depicted it on the drawings is that it looks like it's channelized in some way, but...
Yeah, I, but again, I haven't looked at it, at the final drawing close enough to really know what I'm talking about.
Martha, have they done any soil tests to confirm that, in fact, once you get below the twelve inches, you have better soil, that you don't have desoil?
I don't know what they've done, but...
There are test pits that are shown on the, on the drawings or logs.
Okay, I guess John really has to take a look at this and...
Yeah, typically, typically, those are just backhoe test pits. They're not boring, so you don't know, you don't always know what's way down. You know what's down to twelve-feet-ish, thereabouts, about as deep as you can get with a backhoe.
Yeah.
I mean, that's typically the information you get.
Okay. So we will obviously figure that one out. All ongoing, the proposed zoning amendments, accessory apartment bylaw revisions, the definition revisions, and we need to set a public hearing date for both of those.
Now, does anybody need copies of either of, of those documents?
Yeah, I do. I, no.
I, I would like to have them, although I have it on the computer.
I'm okay. I, I downloaded, I downloaded. I think I've got it.
And this, this one's double-sided. The definitions, language changes.
Gotcha, got that. There you go. So this is the most recent language. I think this is the same language that we submitted to the Board of Selectmen.
Yes.
So there has not been any, what you're looking at is what we told the Board of Selectmen we were going to do. And so on the first document, which is the accessory apartments, that should all be the same. And so I guess your question, Martha, is are we okay with all this, and let's move forward?
Uh, that's my question, and it looks like George had some comments.
Oh, I forgot. What did I do with George?
George, I don't know.
George, there it is. I thought he had the comments on...
I had them on...
On the hung, on the definitions.
Accessory apartments also.
Proposed zoning amendments, accessory apartments, kind of in the middle of his sheet.
So, so the first one is a, just a technical question?
Yeah, was there any particular reason for the paragraph eight point A instead of A? And you've changed that, Martha, by the looks.
Uh, yeah, I think the first, what happens sometimes when, when something does, gets done and track changes the review mode, the formatting gets really funky. So...
Okay, so the second one is in Ray AJ.
Well, now it's in Ray J, just J, on page three at the top.
The proposed accessory apartment shall not violate...
Shall not violate any deed restrictions applicable to the subject law of residence. Who knows?
Well, the owner would know, wouldn't they?
No, not necessarily.
But they should.
He only has a deed that may not include the restrictions that were on a prior deed. You don't know. It's, it's up to him, I would think, to say to the board, yeah, I give you an affidavit that there are none, but it's not the responsibility of the board to find out. It's for the owner to tell us that there are no restrictions.
Okay.
So I would suggest that if he signs an affidavit, a notarized affidavit to the board, that there are no such deed restrictions, I'd be happy.
Okay.
Just to take it on blind faith that there are no restrictions, I, I can't do that. It's like the Caldwell Farm Trail. It was an easement that the owners didn't know about. Right?
Nothing for me.
Well, some of them.
So, let's just see what we wanna do with this thing.
There is one comment that I had that I wanted to make, but I, I think I went on the online one, and this is the whole thing, and I can't find it. There was, there's something in here about a provision that if it is abandoned, that if it's, that if it's, that if it's abandoned... that if it's abandoned for two years and it's a non-conforming use, that it can, if they wish to reactivate it, it cannot go, it cannot go back to the non-conforming use.
That's correct.
Okay. This is one thing that, I'm just suggesting this, and I want to get, get your opinions on it. If something is going to go from a non-conforming use and it's abandoned, it seems to me that it might not be a bad idea to, to first warn the person that they're now within a certain period of time, and if it is not used, that they will lose their non-conforming use. Then, once that period is hit, that they should receive a letter and have it recorded, that this is no longer going to be valid for non-conforming use after being abandoned.
Whose obligation is it to make that notice out to the owner? Is it the town?
Well, who's making the determination that it's abandoned?
Essentially, the building inspector.
Building inspector.
Well, then it would best come from someone like that, yes. But what I, a worst-case scenario is this. The building is abandoned, it's two years out. Now, somebody that abandons a building is not really interested in the building. That, it speaks for itself. He may well make an effort to sell it. Part of the selling process might say, well, look, I've been using, you can use this now as, as a, even though it's a non-conforming use, you can use it, and there will be nothing. Nothing that a lawyer could do in terms of a title search to find out that in fact, it is no longer valid for the use that, that it had been used for. That would be my concern. Is it clear what I'm saying?
If it's abandoned, an attorney, a title examiner is going to go to the building inspector and say, what's been the timeframe on this?
Hopefully, that'll be the case.
Yeah. Yeah, I think it probably would be.
I think it would be.
Yeah.
Okay.
I, I, I think it might be okay.
Martha, we're dealing with state law here, aren't we? Two years abandonment?
I'm not sure.
Is that usual and customary?
It's two, two years.
It's two years under state law.
Yeah, I believe so. Which is what, because I think that's in this, on the second sheet of the definitions and language changes. Yeah, I, I think that's when Sam requested that we put in abandon, the words abandon, and, and it is a two-year period.
Right.
Which I think he got that from state.
Did he want to say a, a removal of the non-conformity?
Um...
The right to remain non-conforming?
Um...
Did that come from him, or?
Uh, I mean, the, the non-conforming language is what we have right now.
Yeah.
The issue was that buildings are sometimes not used. All we, all we said was not used. And sometimes they're not used for a period for var- various reasons.
It's not the same as the...
But it doesn't mean that they've been abandoned.
But why do we, why do we want necessarily? In many cases, keeping the non-conformity strikes me as no big deal. In other cases, the non-conformity could be a problem, and we would want to wipe out the non-conformity if the building is abandoned. But just to say right off the bat, that might mean that the building won't get sold. You know, if you can't, if you can't leave it alone as is, maybe we wiped out the guy's chance of selling it.
No, John, the...
What's that?
The town doesn't have the pleasure of saying, oh, it's okay. At the end of two years, under state law, it's, comes back to conformity.
I'm sorry, I'm missing a hearing, A. Joyce, I'm not hearing you.
Give me your good ear.
Not like a grown-up. Vile, I bet.
It would be nice if the town had that ability to say, oh, it's okay. We'll let the two years go by and we'll keep you going as long as you want to. State law says you can't do that, right, Martha?
Oh, it's a state law thing?
Yeah.
Right, if it's, yeah.
It terminates.
Okay, so they lose their right to be non-conforming by state law?
If it's abandoned.
If it's abandoned, okay, that answers my question then. All right.
And Richard, to your comment, it would be good to give people notice if there's an owner who can be found. But if the town takes on the obligation to do that and is not able to, who's responsible?
Well, if they make, if they make, if they do the due diligence and make the sincere effort to try to contact them and send a letter, have it recorded, you've done as much as humanly possible.
I don't think they have to do it, though. I think that's an obligation the building commissioner just might not want to take on.
You're probably right.
Yeah.
I think I am.
Because there could be some difficulty if it comes to be like two years and a month or something of that sorts, because these things are not always black and white as to, and the end of the two years is. All right, I'm just throwing that out as a, as a comment.
Okay, so let me just go back here for a second. And regarding the first comment on the accessory apartments from George at the top of page three.
No violation of any deed restrictions. I, I think that we would at least want the applicant or the owner to provide an affidavit, notarize that they're, to his knowledge.
Notarized?
I would prefer it so it's recordable. It would be a recordable document under those circumstances.
I don't, I don't feel any way about this. I just don't want to put too many...
Notarization's easy, but I mean, otherwise, who's supposed to determine this? Is it the town? Is it the planning board? Is it the owner? We assume it's the owner, but it's not clear.
Okay. So, why don't we add the language here? Added to the effect that the applicant shall state in a notarized affidavit provided to the board that there are no such deed restrictions. Okay? So, we'll just add that. Is that all right with everybody?
Mm-hmm.
All right, so that's the first thing. And then the second is in occupancy requirements, B and D.
I mean, can I just go back to that for a second? That might make an owner uncomfortable. But that may be the way it has to be in terms of making that statement that there are no deed restrictions. Otherwise, the town is just sort of winging it. I think it's okay, but while we're changing, I just wanted to give you that caveat.
But, I mean, is, this is a standard thing we have with any kind of project we're involved in. We ask whether or not there's deed restrictions on it, right? Don't we?
Uh...
And then what do we accept?
And we, we, we ask that they identify anything like deed restrictions or easements that are existing.
And usually, they, and how do they do that to us?
And so, they'll put a statement on the drawing saying that, you know...
There's no deed restrictions.
They have not, you know, to the best of their knowledge, there are no...
I think this is a bit onerous, what we're asking here.
Well, you could say to the best of their knowledge.
To the best of their knowledge.
Which is fine. Qualify it with to the best of their knowledge.
I mean, if, it should be similar to what we do with normal applicants for planning board reviews.
Yeah, but a deed restriction is enforceable under law, is it not?
That's correct.
Sure it is.
So, you know, we can't say anything else.
They, they...
Maybe you don't even need to say it, because they can't do it anyway.
Right.
Just doesn't hurt to call it to somebody's attention so they'll be aware of that issue and maybe check.
If they know, that's fine. If they don't know, they might want to check.
I'm sorry?
If they know that, that they don't have any deed restrictions, that's fine. If they don't know, they might want to check with somebody.
Well, that's why it, it's not bad having it in there.
I mean, most people who have recently bought or sold their property have some kind of a report from an attorney.
They could do a title search, of course.
It could be a title exam or a certificate of title, which is the same thing.
And a certificate of title. I mean, it's...
But I have had some, some instances, people have come in with property wanting to subdivide it or with a question of whether they could subdivide it or not, and going back through the records, they weren't aware of any restrictions. But going back through records, there are in fact ZBA decisions or various other things that, that restrict the use of their property that they weren't aware of.
Right, right.
But those aren't deed res- oh, yeah, okay.
Sure they are.
Yes, yeah.
All right. Well, okay. We'll, we'll put, I, I'm okay. Let's leave the...
To my lo- knowledge, so I'll bring it up.
Yeah, to my knowledge, okay?
Yeah, and I will run that with Sam. He may...
All right, and then a second. In eight, in eight.
Eight?
Page eight or number eight?
Number eight.
Number eight, occupancy requirements. B and D, should we add a provision that he or she may not rent the primary residence during any such temporary absence?
They can go to Florida for eight months, or six months rather, or less. Can they rent during that time or not? Because the primary owner has to use that as his property, as his personal residence. He's already got a rental apartment. And while they're away, can they rent their primary residence? Question.
Well, it would have to be less than six months, right?
It would be.
Why couldn't, as long as he conforms to the six months being there, he could rent it for less than six months and still conform with, with all the other, with the other requirement. I don't see why he couldn't do that. I mean, unless we say we can't, he can't.
No, it's his primary residence, and that's one of the conditions. So, is he keeping it as primary residence? And can he lease his primary residence for five months, for example? I suppose he could.
Well, if you went, play devil's advocate, if you say you were a professor and you went on sabbatical for a year to Europe and wanted to rent your house to somebody, it would still be your primary residence.
It would stay that way.
And you could...
It would be his home of record, anyway. Yeah, okay. Let's not do that.
Okay. So, that's, now, now let's go back up to hung basements, which are now renamed. Did we get it in the renaming? I didn't get it in the renaming.
No, I haven't changed it, but my suggestion is that we rename it suspended basement.
Suspended.
Which I discussed that with Sam today. He was fine with it. Elizabeth concurs that it's a better.
Okay.
I like suspended, that's nice.
All right.
Much better.
Description.
C, three C. Delete finished before floor conflicts with blow.
Let's read D first. The building or the hung basement or suspended basement is unfinished on the interior and unconditioned, which I suppose means on air-conditioned?
Well, it means unconditioned, both heat and air, so...
Okay, fine.
Unclimate controlled might be another way of putting it, but it's...
And not climate con- well, yeah, that...
Unconditioned, I think, is, was Sam's term, and I think that kind of means either.
Okay.
I didn't really understood what it meant. I thought conditioned meant, meant conditioned for, for living in as opposed to being air-conditioned or heated or something. It wasn't clear to me. I mean, for what that's worth.
No, I, that was my first reading as well.
Hmm.
So, maybe it should say climate, if that, if he means climate controlled, we should say that.
But in any event, it says unfinished. Now, if you go up to C, the maximum ceiling height is measured from the finished floor to the ceiling framing. So, shouldn't that be just the floor without a finished, finish?
Where's the finished floor? Below? From the floor?
Yeah, it's from the floor.
Floor, not finished. Well, I think you're right, George.
But it's, I, I think that that's intended to mean it's not from, say, the floor joists or, you know, whatever the framing is. It's from the plywood.
The surface of the floor?
Surface of the floor.
Yeah, a floor surface.
Floor surface, yeah, that's it.
Floor surface. To the ceiling framing, okay. Got that. Change. And then three D, and then PB three? What PB three, PB three, okay.
Uh, that's just an edit kind of thing, because if you go to PB three on the back page, talks about changing bylaw, all one word, to bylaw hyphen law, and all in lowercase. And then you go down to PB four, and any reference to bylaw is with a capital B hyphen capital L.
It should be, I think it's capital, 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 isn't it?
Yeah, it is, usually.
Okay. All right. So, got that. Proposed zoning amendments, accessory apartments, okay, that's it. Right, George?
Yes.
Okay. Did anyone else have any other comments on these documents?
Not I.
Neither I. Richard?
None.
Okay. So, on these two documents, and not yet the, are we okay with the changes that we have just made?
I believe so.
I think so.
Okay. So, what do I need to do here? What do we need to do? Take a vote to accept the latest changes to the, to the both documents and to set a public hearing date to review them?
So moved.
Right.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion further about these? Let me just ask, Martha, do you have all the changes that we need to make?
Um, I...
I'll give you my notes as well.
I believe that I, I believe that I do.
I think you do. I mean, they weren't, you know, it took us a while to get through them, but I think they were not extensive.
They're not extensive.
Okay.
And again, this isn't, you know, it's still subject to change through the public hearing process, so...
So, then, set a public hearing date, oh, let's say, we'll set, let's also include the date. What date do we, would we like to have the public hearing? Is this the first?
I would suggest the first.
First of April, yeah, otherwise, we're not going to make it. So, a, a date of April first to be eight fifteen?
Yeah, to give the other application.
The other one, right, we'll be hearing that night, will be seven fifteen. So, that's the motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Now, the last item here is...
The, I, I had included the site plan...
Site plan review regulations.
Right, which I think we should defer.
Let's defer.
Yeah, if that will save any time for Martha, I think we have, the rules, the rules and regs right now aren't bad. The subdivision rules and regs are appalling. I think we ought to put effort into getting those cleaned up.
I agree. In fact, I was going to suggest that, because there's so many other things that we're trying to get out. We're trying to get the master plan out and a number of other things. But the subdivision regs have been hanging around far too long.
And they are very, very bad. This, the site plan review, I don't think they're that bad. There's improvements we can make, but they don't make us look like idiots.
Well, the, the issue is that the regulations that we started to put together to go along with the revised bylaw have never been adopted, so actually, the, the regs that we have in place don't match our bylaw. So, this is why I'd like to get this done, but I think if we could...
The site plan review. Yeah, in other words, we're, 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 we're operating the site plan review process as we did tonight inappropriately in a way. Is that right?
Well, yeah, without, without...
Without having adopted these.
Right, right, so...
So, we do have to do that.
So, we have to do it, but I think that if we can, if we can do it in conjunction with the subdivision rules and regs and...
We do all three at once would be good, yeah.
So, when do, when do we do subdivision rules and regs?
Well, I think we've got to get review comments back from the people that are going, that are going to take a look at it, but...
So, who's been doing that? I know, this has been out for so long, I don't remember who's, who's been reviewing them.
Well, Joe, Joe, we would have do anyway. I'm going to ask Ed, I'm going to ask Millennium, and I'm going to ask Steve Sawyer's office to do a, an informal freebie review.
Okay. So, let's do that. When, when, when can we have their comments? Are they going to get them out right?
Well, I don't have the final thing yet.
It's me.
Because you're doing things that are additive to the technical portion. And I haven't seen those yet.
Yeah, and I'm not worried about review on, on that. It's really the technical stuff that needs to go out.
Well, just email whatever the last is, because I'm not sure that I'm, I'm never sure that I have the latest and greatest.
And it should also go to, I would suggest, Doug and Sam and Ginny.
Oh, yeah. Oh, no, I, that, the question was just outside the town, but the usual, Doug.
Problem.
Sam. Ginny, definitely. Board of Health. Okay, selectmen?
Um, not yet. I, I, you, well...
The new ones seem interested.
Possibly, I mean, I think this is...
Damon, Damon got the, the stormwater one, and he really grabbed a hold of it and wanted to know what it was all about, which I would certainly encourage.
Well, we could certainly, certainly do that.
It's pretty, it's cheap, and the, most they can do is chuck it. If they, they don't have to print it.
Well, it's just a question of when we send it to them. I think we need Ginny's comments and some others before we'd get it to the board, selectmen.
Yes, before, right?
Get it to the board of selectmen.
Technical, technical and legal input before.
Let's get the technical review done first, so that we're not giving the board of selectmen. That's why I was saying no. Because I, it's not timing, time-wise, it doesn't make sense to do it yet. But once we've got the, the technical review, the peer review, Sam and Doug, then we will get it to the board.
I would, again, throw the Board of Health in there.
Good.
I think...
So, Martha, then, then, site plan review, right, when are we going to try to do that? At our next meeting?
I'm not, I, I'm not sure that, and we could try it. Elizabeth wants to take a look at it. I'd like everybody to take a, a...
We're talking about the document that we have, which is an eight-page document, which is the planning board re...
It's a submission requirements and procedures.
Procedures. Which I have. Here it is, right here. Site plan review, submission requirements and procedures, which has been. Latest document is as of two fifteen, three oh four, so it's as of today. And I think that, I didn't see anything in here that I thought was a lot different than what we reviewed two, three months ago.
Right, the only thing we had talked about, sort of clarifying that waivers can be granted on, on the submission requirements, just because some of them are, it's very lengthy requirements and some are not appropriate.
So, so let us, does everyone have one of these?
I have it. I didn't read it.
You just handed it out, right?
Just got it.
Just got it. So why don't we say that board members should review this for our next meeting? And that John, in the meantime, is going to somehow get your document on subdivision regs and get it out to, for technical peer review.
Yeah, I'll get it out to, you, you're going to take care of Joe.
I'll take care of Joe in in-house.
We need Nate and, and James to look at that subdivision too. But I, what I was planning on doing is walking them through it, giving them a personal tour, rather than throw a forty-page document at a guy that just took over the job last week, and ask him to read through it and see what matters to him. I kind of know what they care about, what they don't. So I was just going to sit down with him and say, here's what we're doing, what he's doing. I feel pretty good, because I have talked with Tim on this as we were going along, but nonetheless.
Okay, so we're all set on what we're going to do on site plan review and subdivision regs? Okay, Borrego Solar. I am reminded of the note that we sent to the Board of Selectmen some time back with our opinion of both of those, and I was just curious to what extent the, the proposal for Main, Main Street has changed that our comments back then wouldn't still be appropriate?
They probably are. I think most, most of the changes really are not changes in scope. They've added some information based on questions that came up during the first round. But I have two sets in my office if anybody wants to take a look at them. So if we could do that for the next time as well.
Yeah, I think we should. That's not it. But I know that George has had some questions on Solar. I know that we had the neighbors in here on, from, if you get the name of the road, what's the name of the road?
Courtney.
Courtney Drive.
Courtney Drive. And, but I would like to see to what extent their proposal is any different than what we saw the last time.
At the selectmen's meeting, Martha, I think you remember, Representative from Borrego got up and said, it's the same proposal. There are no changes.
Is that right now?
Yes.
That's what he said.
Right.
So, do you all have a copy of what we sent in August? Just as a thing to help you out? Could you email that to?
Yeah, email that out again, please.
Because it, it has some general comments, and it has very specific comments about Main Street regarding, in particular, the elimination of the trees, and that the developer be particularly sensitive to the screening aspects of it, and that particularly sensitive to the concerns of the Courtney Drive residents. So anyway. So that would be helpful for you all, I think, to take another look at.
I've, I'm still concerned about the, the cost estimate for removal where we, that we wanted to have in our pocket for when, if they.
If they decide.
Decided to abandon it.
I think they did it themselves, am I right?
Pardon me?
Yes.
They did it themselves.
Themselves, and I don't understand why, when we ask for a professional estimator, we can't get one. Okay? They, a professional engineer did it, and that does not make him a professional estimator.
Right.
A professional estimator is somebody that does estimating for a living. And I, I would say seventy-five percent of my income for, oh, ten or twelve-year period was cost estimating, but I'd never thought of myself as a professional estimator. Because that was, although I was okay at it, that was a level above what I thought that where I was. And, you know, if he wants to be a professional estimator, I want to see resume. I want to see other kinds of work that he has estimated. I want to see buildings. I want to see roads. I want to see parking lots. I want to see other solar areas in his resume that he's done. That makes him a professional estimator. Saying he is one does not.
Yep. I agree.
And so I, I think rather than get into the argument about, is he, you know, outside or inside or whatever, just suggest to the selectmen they add fifty percent to whatever he's done, whatever he, no, I'm serious.
Well.
He, he's estimated in a world where it never rains, people never smoke cigarettes, you know, never need to go to the bathroom. It, it's really tight, and he's not gone a tight for every single one of them.
Well.
And that's the best of all possible worlds. It doesn't happen.
Well, I, I don't know that we need to go to the fifty percent. I think we just go back and say that we believe that the town ought to get a professional estimate done by a professional estimator. Just, that's what we should say.
Did Borrego offer a number, period?
I, I don't remember.
Well, they came up with, it was a number of ninety, roughly ninety-two thousand dollars.
Yeah.
And that was.
The growth percentage of what, two percent a year or something?
Yeah, it was something like that, yeah.
And I have no way of, no.
Yeah, and that was based upon somebody's estimate, and it does not follow the abandonment requirement in the bylaw.
Alicia took the position that that was okay, because.
I know she did.
Insist on an outside. But I, I, to accept him as a professional estimator, I want to see a resume.
I think.
And examples of.
I don't disagree.
Right, I think you're right. Okay, so, anything further on Borrego?
No.
Okay, we will email you the letter that we sent to the selectmen last time. I guess we review, there's nothing new to review, because it's essentially the same?
Um, I mean, they, they say that they've answered questions.
Do you have a written document from them?
I've got two copies of their application.
Oh, I'd like to see that.
And I did.
How, how extensive is it?
It's the same, I mean, it's the, the drawing package and the stormwater report and the, you know, the whole bit. I did, I did review it. I had a number of comments.
So we can all come by and do that, and all come by and take a look. Okay. Okay. All right, liaison reports, Board of Selectmen. Well, I guess we do know a little bit about this and that, but anything new?
No.
No, anybody know? No?
No.
I just want, when it comes to the Board of Selectmen, I, I met with Martha and about this PVOD, photovoltaic overlay district, and she went over it and showed me the areas that are more non-available than available. As a practical matter, I, I just don't think that it's, it's practical for, for Newberry. In other words, it's a good idea, but in fact, the areas that are available for this are so restricted that I just don't think that kind of an overlay would be available.
So what makes them restricted?
Well, there have to be, there have to, there has to be lands that are available that are, that, that would be amenable to a, a solar farm. Means it needs some proximity to the power lines. It needs, and that proximity cannot be wetland. It can be conservation land. You're going to run into some difficulties with lands that are agriculture and, and, and what I was hoping to see, and I didn't see, was that there might be some lands available that are, that we could, that there would be no controversy about. That there would be, let's say, zone light industrial, something like a vacant Pearson Plaza type of situation, where it has, where there were no trees, and where we could probably get that done relatively easily, but I don't think that there is. That's my honest opinion.
Okay.
Now, go ahead.
So did you look at that as well, Martha?
Well, we looked at it together, yeah.
And so you.
Yeah, we looked at the industrial district and.
That was good to do.
I also, and Martha put me onto this, she indicated that Damon Jaspersen was particularly interested in the, and I discussed this, I think, with John a little earlier, in the possibility of a solar farm situation right next to the transfer station. And I emailed Damon, and he's away right now. I mean, he was, he seemed very interested and receptive. I said that while he was away, I would do some research on it. I went over the, the area, and I took a photograph of the, of the mound that's there. And it turns out, the angle is thirteen degrees, which is actually very low. In researching some of the providers that do photovoltaic systems, they talk about maximum limits that range anywhere from eighteen degrees up to even thirty degrees. So I don't think that what we have there would, at least in terms of the slope, be a limiting factor. There are no trees. It's vacant land. It's land that's never going to be built on. And the additional advantage is, because it's municipal, not only would the town get the benefit of the electricity it could sell to the utility, it would also be able to charge a rent to the utility. So it could be a win-win situation for the town.
Martha, didn't MVPC look at that?
They did look at it, and, you know, we talked about this. The Meridian did the fatal flaw analysis, and, and their determination was that the slopes were too steep. The group that came in who.
Meridian Engineering.
Engineering, right. And there was a group that came in, Mass American Energy, who said that they have technology that would allow them to, to do something, you know, steeper, although they, they were limiting themselves to two hundred and fifty kilovolts, but there are others who feel that their technology would allow them to do it on the slopes.
Because I, I've always felt that that's like.
It seems perfect.
Perfect, but yet, but yet that some litmus test that was done maybe a year or two ago, two, two?
It was a little more than that. I think it was like three years ago.
It was actually, you know what, before I came on board, so it was probably three or four years ago, found that, for some reason, they eliminated it. But I think, what would we need to do to re-energize that?
Well, Damon, we are going to have a follow-up conversation with the group that I met with. Damon has also been talking to another group called Blue Wave, and they're the ones who say that they've got the technology that they could actually cite it on, on the mounds. And so I think conversations are starting.
So, and Damon, Damon's kind of leading the charge on that? Well, good for him. That's great.
Without, yeah, that particular group he is, so.
Good, you're right. Because, you know, I, I'd gotten something from my last MVPC meeting, excuse me. And it was Merrimack Valley Planning Commission, DLTA-funded programs and activities. And right here it says, brown fields and solar farms. Work for Newburyport, Newbury, North Andover, Boxford. MVB provided technical assistance in helping communities consider retrofitting closed landfills and brightfields. So that must have been what they were referencing. Is that right?
Must have been, although that was a while back.
Well. Wait a minute. In addition, Methuen recently completed a solar development, and Newbury is negotiating now with a solar developer, but, so there's a misconstrued thing. They're implying that we know that we're, we're not negotiating with, I guess we are, but we're not negotiating with Borrego. Borrego is just looking for an approval process. Anyway.
I mean, there will be.
So here's, here's what they say they're doing for us, so. So I think that's good news.
Okay. Yeah, I'm going to meet with, if there's any way I can help him, I'd like to follow it along.
Okay.
I'm not entirely sure that I would wipe out the rest of town. I, I, I would agree with the statement that no matter where you cite a solar field, there's going to be objections. But that's the purpose of trying to zone this, to flush out objections and either lay the ghost or, or say the heck with it, it's too, we're going to lose. I'd, I'd be inclined to keep thinking about.
Not to close the door on it.
Not to close the door on it. I'm thinking this, this land behind me that's absolutely out of the question at the moment, because Matthew was farming it. That may not, that may not always be the case. On the other hand, it may, because Matthew's son is planning on taking over, which is moving right into the business. So that may very well be farmland in perpetuity. But there are other farm areas in town that may not be in that position. There's a lot of land that's in the transition, going from pasture to forest. You know, the airport, there's land around the airport that is upland, there's not marsh. It isn't needed. It's not within the zone of aeronautic exclusionary airplane zones that, that is in Newbury.
Not Newburyport.
Give up on it.
Okay.
Personally, I, I think it's worth keeping, worth looking around and thinking and scratching our heads and.
All right, maybe I'll talk to you a little bit more. I'll talk to you more about it.
Yeah.
And get some ideas from you.
I had thought the landfill had been looked at early on by some promoter to put a solar array in, and it was concerned about the, they were going to put it on skids.
Oh, I don't know. I didn't hear of the skids. I heard, I heard it was all about the angle.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I personally, I can't see why that's a big deal.
Yeah, I guess the question is what's.
Requires a bit more engineering than one that's dead flat.
It may well be more technology is available today.
I think it's improving.
You know, and also, also we own the land. I mean, what's, what's not to like about that?
Yeah. Who can object?
Has anyone ever looked into putting it on top of Triton's roof?
I think Triton looked at it. They looked at some, a couple of options. I think that might have been one, and also they have some land on Elm Street across the street. They were approached by somebody.
They've talked about that one. That's the project Adventure Site, right?
Right.
They used to swing from trees and.
Yeah, yeah.
And what also, they have a relatively large parking, parking area, and almost, that's what you see more than anything, is putting solar arrays above the, above the parking lots.
Carport installation.
Yeah.
That's what they call it.
It's terrific stuff.
The only thing about.
Triton ought to do that. I mean, I know they've got all sorts of budgetary issues every year, but.
The only thing about doing it on Triton, that kind of facility, is vandalism is not a minor concern with solar arrays. I can't think of a worse situation than putting it in a bunch of.
Kids can get at it.
Yeah.
But maybe that's exactly where you should put it.
Unfortunately, many, many times, the roof will not hold the solar.
Yeah.
You know, it, I'd say, the looks I've looked at with that question, I'd say fifty percent of the time, even on brand-new buildings, and even in buildings where I designed the damn roof, it will not hold the solar.
Well, especially with, everybody's now sensitized to these very heavy snow loads.
What should happen is the building code should require an extra five to ten PSF.
Whatever.
Thrown on everything else above the snow, above the dead, for future solar, for any flat roof.
Yeah, it sounds reasonable.
But that time has not come yet.
Good idea.
Okay, nothing more from MVPC. I did have a meeting, we met the day after our last meeting, and basically, maybe, mainly went over their budget for the coming year. And that's about it for that CONCOM. Anything else?
Just let me back up to MVPC. I was at the Stormwater Symposium, whatever you call it.
Collaborative.
Collaborative, thank you, this morning, and somebody spoke about complete streets. And I understood that there was going to be a symposium or, or something, in the fairly near future, to describe what the program is, and the pros and the cons, and apparently it's something you sign up for. Is that the same thing, the seminar that we went up to at City Hall? Is that a different thing? Different program?
Well, it's the same program, the Complete Streets program. I don't.
But I got the impression that if you buy into it, there's down, a downside and an upside. There's concerns about there are things you have to do that you otherwise wouldn't do. And like, there's rumors you need to put sidewalks on both sides, whether you want to or not, whether you need to or not. Tony, Tony's somebody.
Yeah, Tony.
Kornick.
Yeah.
Was talking about it. But it sounded like something that we ought to at least look at when the time comes.
Yeah, they've not mentioned that at, at any of the meetings I've been at, but, yeah, I thought Complete Streets.
We had a bunch of DPW guys, street guys, there, so I guess they figured that was a place to.
Okay.
Throw it open. CONCOM, not much. We've got the Triton thing. That's the biggest thing we have at the moment.
Okay.
And of course, we're waiting on snow to melt to make the final work wetlands wise.
Okay. And you're going to your first ZBA meeting?
I'll liaise for the first time tomorrow night.
Okay. And I think that we have, did we send a copy of the zoning changes to the ZBA?
I sent them to Susan to distribute to them.
So you should be aware of that at the meeting, because that will be the first look at it, except for Eric, I think, has, has seen them. That will be the first look at it, except for Eric, I think, has, has seen them, so I don't think you're... Okay, with that, I think we, I would, anything else for the good of the order here?
Nope.
Then we'd, I'd ask for a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Done.